Good morning, everybody. It's time to call the meeting of Tuesday, March 18th, to order. The first item today is the approval of the agenda. We have no additions to the agenda.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. I think this is part of the agenda already.
That is correct.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried. We'll move on to citizens to be heard, and I see we have no citizens to be heard in the audience today unless Lori wants to come up.
Happy.
Not today? No complaints?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to the payment of the bills and vouchers.
So move second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried. Approval of minutes of March 4th and the 11th, 2014.
Move to approve.
Motion in the second on the minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried. Okay, we have now at 8:35. It's our public hearing to consider the change in the offices of county auditor, treasurer, and recorder, county recorder from elected positions to appointed positions by the county board.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Okay. All right, we have a motion to open hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion in the second. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried. Mr. Berger. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the commission. This is a public hearing, reference Senate File 629, and what it refers to is legislation has passed, both the houses of our state legislature, and the legislation has been signed by the governor. And if you folks wish to proceed forward with making those two positions, the auditor, treasurer, and the recorder appointed rather than an elected position, you then must pass a resolution stating that you plan to do such. And you go ahead and pass that resolution, and then there's a 60-day period of reverse referendum that we will wake, and then we will file with the Secretary of State, and it will take effect. So what you have in front of you is the legislation, and then the second page is a resolution in regards to that. And, Mr. Chair, I don't know when you want to take public comment on this, or should we read through the resolution?
Let me go through and read through it.
Okay. And this is a resolution establishing the appointed office of county auditor, treasurer, and county recorder. It says, "Whereas Minnesota Session Law 2014, Chapter 161, Senate File 629, is an act that provides a process for making certain elected county offices appointed in Clay County, after being passed by both the Minnesota House and Senate, the bill was signed into law by the governor on March 12th, 2014. And whereas the Clay County Board of Commissioners has previously evidenced its support to make the offices of county auditor, treasurer, and county recorder not elected but filled by appointment by the county board, Clay County Resolutions 2012-16 and 2013-7 and continues to desire to support the same, and whereas the Clay County Board of Commissioners wishes to appoint the offices of county auditor, treasurer, and county recorder effective upon completion of the term of office to which the incumbent was elected or until a vacancy occurs in that office, whichever occurs earlier. Therefore, be it resolved that the Clay County Board of Commissioners hereby makes the office of county auditor, treasurer, and county recorder appointed offices filled by appointment by the county board, and be it further resolved that the Clay County Board of Commissioners orders that the effective date of said appointment will take place upon completion of the term of office, which is at the end of this year, to which the incumbent was elected or until a vacancy occurs in the office, whichever occurs here is." And if you should move forward, it says adopted by the Clay County Board of Commissioners this 17th day of March 2014. It's the 18th today, thank you. So, Mr. Chair, I guess we'll look in hindsight.
We're on. Any comments by the board?
Just that, I think it's an important move to make. It brings us much more sense of security that we have qualified people in those positions. I've been waiting a long time for this.
Lori?
I just have a comment on.
Lori, we should probably speak to the microphone if we were just.
I just wanted to.
Yeah, come on up.
It's nothing, I just have. I just had a change to the resolution. It's actually auditor-dash-treasurer, not slash.
Oh.
So that's the only change I had.
Okay, just that correction.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Lori. Chair?
Yes.
So, Brian, in our circumstances with the recorder's position, would we fill that position now, or do we wait until the term is up? Because it says until there's an open or a vacancy.
Mr. Chair, that position has been filled by you, and so they now occupy that position of the recorder.
Until the term is up.
Until the term expires. Yes. And if I may say, since we did talk about this just a little bit at the township officers' meeting yesterday, and one of the township officers pointed out the fact, and I think it's important, as they brought it up because they thought it was important, that what are the qualifications to be, to run for the office of auditor, treasurer? And the answer is, you have to be a citizen of Clay County. And as I addressed yesterday, Clay County operates a budget of about $63 million right now. Your county auditor, treasurer is your fiscal officer. That's a lot of responsibility, and to not require even an accounting degree for that position, we need to move forward with qualifications in regards to that.
I guess I'd have to agree with that, too, that this is a good move, because I think we've been fortunate and have a good qualified people in that position. But it's the unknown that we have to be prepared for.
So, in this process and the timing of this, because these people are in these positions until 12:31, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And so how do, what is the process to get ready to fill that appointment so that we don't have a period of time where that would be vacant? How is that done?
Mr. Chair, I guess what I would anticipate happening is that as we move forward in the rest of the year, we would suggest to this county board of how you would fill that position, and you will make a determination as to a process, whether you just go ahead and appoint the people that are in those positions, whether you open it up for selection, whether you put some qualifications out there that you want for these positions. But between now and the end of the year, we will have a system of making that appointment by yourselves.
That's a good question, Kevin. Would we, in the future, then advertise the position, and people would apply for it? Is that just like they would any other job? Is that?
It then becomes an appointed position, just like any of your other department heads, in which you hire people to occupy.
Okay.
Wait.
I believe I heard you say we could appoint from within, without opening it up?
Oh, well, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Any comments from the public?
I have a couple of questions.
You want to come up to the microphone, Don?
Alan Rasmussen is my name, and I'm not here to badmouth anybody, but I guess I'd like to know, the position that is right now, the auditor and the treasurer have all been combined into one, so there's basically nobody accountable to the other person if there is an issue, like you were just talking about with the however many millions of dollars this county takes care of. So now, all of a sudden, we're looking at taking the power away from the people as far as a vote as to who gets into that position. And I'm not saying that you people aren't qualified to make that appointment, but at some point, the power for all of these positions and to monitor all these dollars gets put right here. And the people that vote don't get a chance to do anything as far as that one position, and to say, while they vote for all of you, the majority still rules when it comes to the commission. So I guess that's just the thing that I was looking at with this position. If we had an auditor and a treasurer so that they were kind of a balance of power, or they at least be helping each other out and watching what's going on with all these dollars, I would think that, I still think that we should have those two positions myself.
Okay. Maybe I can try to.
Please.
Talk a little bit to that. The, in terms of the oversight that goes on between the auditor and, and I fully understand it, you know, there used to be two different roles, and one had one purpose in taking care of the money, and the other one was the purpose of overseeing through the.
Just like at Max.
Right, just like at Max. But the fact of the matter is, is we do incorporate into our security process a complete outside audit that's done of all of our financial work anyway. And so the eyes and ears of that do come from an outside entity that does, and is quite transparent in the review of all of the work that they do. In terms of, in terms of your comment as to taking the abilities away from the public, that does become an issue here that's, it's also difficult for us. But, you know, sometimes elections sometimes can be won by more of a popularity contest rather than a qualification issue. And like what Brian talked about here in the particular case of somebody who is responsible for $63 million annually, and to make sure that it's all done appropriately, is it correct for us to see somebody who is, might run for office in the county, has a well-known name, is well-respected, and people like the person, man or woman?
Like yourself.
But they have, but they have, but they have, but they have no background in what the job really entails.
Let me make a comment to that.
Sure.
How about if you put job qualifications in order to run for that position?
But I don't think we have the ability to do that. That has to be done by the state legislature to do that. So the only, the only ones where we know of that has that, for example, is I think there are requirements to run for sheriff. And those aren't established by the county, those are established by the state. Now, if the state would put those qualifications into those things, then I think we wouldn't, we wouldn't have lobbied to do what we want to do here. So I, you know, so otherwise, I agree with you. But that is the crux, and this isn't, to us, this isn't to undermine the people's ability to vote. But what we're saying is you could, you know, we're kind of stuck under this current situation where all the people have to make a decision based on who filed. And those who filed may not meet the true qualifications of what we need to handle the $63 million. And hence then you, now you're into a popularity contest, and the consequences of having the wrong person without that experience can be far more detrimental to the county than, I think, hopefully, having a county board establish good guidelines for who should be qualified, and going through that process, and a fair process of an appointment. And Alan, we're seeing more and more counties that are actually doing this. Just in this go-around, there was another, in addition to our county, there was.
Another four.
Another four. So it's, I think counties are realizing that this position is too significant and too important to be through a popularity contest.
We still have two elected positions that we have no intention of changing, the sheriff and the county attorney. But both of those positions have requirements. You have to be a law enforcement officer, or have a police officer's license to be a sheriff, and you also have to be an attorney in order to be a county attorney. And as far as auditor, auditor treasurer, and auditor treasurer and assessor, there are absolutely no requirements other than being a citizen. And so it's always been risky, I think, with the election process. Now, not that we don't trust the citizens, but sometimes the citizens don't know everything that they need to know about candidates.
And even more than that, though, is the citizens may know their candidates, but from the standpoint of significance would be, did anybody who filed, who filed have the ability? I mean, somebody might want to file, because, boy, that compensation package looks good. I wouldn't mind having that job. Alls I got to do is get one more vote than the next guy, and I got a nice paycheck for the next year.
How did we manage to get the talent that we have in that position right now without those qualifications?
Well, and again, you know, for example, Lori, she, she's worked within the department before she assumed the position. She went out and the people, you know, and again, this was a fortunate situation for us because we had somebody who was qualified and had the ability to do it. But what we're saying is, if Lori were to step down, then we don't know who the next group of people might come in. We might, we might have seven schoolteachers that come in, that might have no background in financial stuff.
Well, in a sense.
I'm not a schoolteacher.
Don't say anything about schoolteachers.
I am a schoolteacher.
In a sense, we appointed Lori, too, because she followed our auditor who died in office, and so we took the best person in the department to replace her temporarily, and then, of course, she was an incumbent when she, when she ran. So that was, it was partly luck that.
Alan, I'm just going to tell you, I don't, I don't think, me personally, I'm not supporting this because I don't think the people can make the right choice. I'm supporting this out of fear that the right people might not apply. And to me, that's the difference.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank Alan for coming and expressing his opinions today. They were very valid opinions, and Alan, I hope you got some answers that hopefully would be satisfactory to you. Thank you for being here, sir.
And I have one other thing that I'm going to, it'll probably be a little business. I don't know when you're going to get around to it, but I do have one other question, so.
Okay, right. Okay, do we have any other comments from the public regarding the public hearing on this appointment process? Any other comments from the commission? Any other comments from Mr. Berger?
Yes, sir.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
We have a motion. Close at their seconds.
Second.
Okay, your second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the resolution as placed before us with the changes of using the hyphen instead of the slash mark between auditor, treasurer.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion on the motion? None? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Period, and let the record show that was an unanimous vote.
Mr. Chair? Yes. If I may, thank the commission for their support and their leadership on pushing forward. I think it is the right move. I think you hit it right on the nose. It's the qualifications. There's also, when we started this, we were looking at opportunities for streamlining, not making government cheaper, although that certainly is our goal. But if we can streamline some functions and make it more efficient through those offices that we're looking at, that was one of the things that started this out. Also, there, I'd like to thank the current auditor, treasurer, Lori Johnson, and the recent retiree of Connie Raider for their support, and also legislators in here, folks. I think this is, this is good government pushing forward, so thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your work on this, too. All right, our next item is 8:45, renewal of rental agreement with the Minnesota Department of Corrections and the Fannie Office with Stephen Larson. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning, Steve.
As you mentioned, we leased part of the first floor of the Juvenile Center to the Minnesota Department of Corrections. Their lease is set to expire on March 30th of this year. We've been in negotiations with them to look at extending that lease for better part of this winter, and have come to an agreement. Initially, the Department of Corrections was looking at a three-year lease. After some negotiations, we have extended that to a five-year lease with the option for a, both sides agreed to another three years. So we're looking at the first five years of going to April 30th of 2019, with the possibility of leasing through April 30th of 2012. So we looked at a modest increase of a quarter per square foot with the first five-year contract, and should both sides agree to the additional three years, there'd be another quarter that would be added to that for $13.75 per square foot. I did have Jenny look through the contract for any other issues there, and appeared to be a fairly standard, straightforward contract.
I would move to approve this contract.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Any questions? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
So, I'm just going to go back here for a minute and go back to Mr. Rasmussen here. Now, we, in our agendas now, we have a part up front of our agendas that deals with citizens to be heard, and we really don't, I don't know if there is a particular item on the agenda you want to speak to, or is it something else?
No, just a question that I want to ask exactly.
Okay, why don't you, let's just do it now, then, if that's okay. You can either go to that mic or come and sit down, whatever you prefer.
My question actually has to do with the wheelage tax that you guys.
Yes.
Had recently put on.
Yep.
All the vehicles, the trans systems trucks, do they pay a wheelage tax also?
Everybody, I think.
Yeah, I think everybody pays.
None of them are licensed in Minnesota?
Oh. Just the ones in Minnesota pay the wheelage.
Okay, they're, all the licenses that I've seen on the trans systems trucks come out of like Montana? But they do a significant amount of damage to our roads? So is there a possibility of having trans systems pay $10 per truck?
Well.
Running on these roads?
That would have to be researched to see if that's possible. One of the, one of the things that they probably do do is they probably do, they do buy fuel here.
By fuel, what?
By fuel.
Oh, yes.
And, and within the fuel, there are, there's also fuel tax. So they're not getting by completely free with funding some road improvements. But like, you are correct, if they're licensed outside of our county, then we would not be collecting the wheelage tax on them.
As some of you know, I live out on 26.
Yes.
And those trans systems trucks run 24 hours a day. And you know as well as I do that when you run on heavy loads, you're doing damage. And if they can manage to find a place to park their trucks over in North Dakota and buy the fuel over there, they're not doing anything here other than just using up our roads.
Well, you know, maybe I can suggest that we talk to our highway engineer, Dave Overbow, and see if, I just don't know that we have any legal authority to be able to do anything about that.
Well, I guess it was just a question that I had, and I thought, you know.
I, it's the same with gravel trucks.
Well, I understand that, but a lot of those gravel trucks are housed here in Minnesota. Yeah, you're correct.
One of the frustrations with the gravel trucks is the gravel tax, which is collected by the county in which the gravel is mined, and we have many, many of the gravel trucks who load gravel a half a mile into Ottertail or Becker County, and they drive the whole distance across Clay County to put their gravel and cargo, and we can't collect any gravel tax because it all goes to Becker County. So that, you know, those frustrations are there, but I don't know any way around the tax here for wheelage either. I mean, it's according to where they buy their license.
The one thing on the, you know, on that wheelage tax that we did do, the good news about that is that money is staying in Clay County, and it is designated to improve roads in Clay County. It's 100% budgeted for road improvement, not only in rural Clay County, but, you know, that's also being shared with our local communities, our small towns, and our big towns. And so everybody, you know, you know, we're going to see some direct benefit from that, so.
I just, Mr. Chair, and I know his question is, the gentleman's question is referenced to the wheelage tax, but what happens with, if you said a Montana license, for example? That is a prorated license, then, so when they buy that license, they have to pay a portion of that money to the state of Minnesota if they're going to be that far away? Now, if you're on the border between North Dakota and Minnesota, there's a 20 mile an hour, 20 mile free zone, so Minnesota trucks can go into North Dakota that 20 miles, and North Dakota, or North Dakota trucks can come in here the 20 miles, too. So there is a prorating system and things, but it does not apply to the wheelage tax. But just don't assume that they're, they're coming from Montana or way out of state, that we're not getting anything for that, because that is the prorate, that's, the prorate system is based on. Is it how many miles do you put on in that state, and then the dollars go to that state?
We'd love to be able to fix that.
But that doesn't help our roads here.
No.
That goes into the Minnesota general budget.
Well, not in the general budget, but into the Highway Use Fund. Then there is a formula where we get some.
Yeah, all the, all the county-state aid roads that we have, you know, all the vast majority of our funds to repair them do come from state dollars, not county dollars to fix them. And that's through the process of collections that.
The answer to the question is, no, you don't collect wheelage tax.
The answer is no. And the answer right now is, we don't have a way to. Thanks, Alan.
That was it. I'm not bothering you now for a while.
Glad to see you.
Glad you're here.
Always good to see you, Alan. Thanks.
Okay, we will move on to, let's stay on the approval of a new leave donation policy. Good morning, Darren.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Thanks for having me this morning. I, we've been, the PIC committee has seen this a couple of times, and we've been working on this leave donation policy to kind of bring it more in line with what some of the IRS regulations are doing, and kind of want to make it a little bit more fair for everybody based on a couple of incidences that happened in the past. Our current policy as we have it basically says that you have to be out for twenty consecutive days for, well, it says twenty working days. There's some interpretation of that's consecutive working days or twenty working days total. So that was one of the things that we had to clear up a little bit. And also, how that leave is donated to that person in need. Right now, what we do is if you donate eight hours of sick and twenty-four hours of vacation, then the person that is getting that leave gets eight hours of sick and twenty-four hours of vacation. Well, what has happened in the past a couple of times, and it's not prevalent, but it did happen a couple of times, where somebody is out on extended medical leave or whatever, they ask for donations, they get a large amount of vacation leave donated to them, and then they leave shortly after they come back and get paid out all of that vacation. And so that kind of prompted us to relook at the leave donation policy a little bit. And as we were doing that, I was also looking at some of the IRS regulations about leave donation. And so the policy that we have been working on and has been presented to the PIC is the one that you have in front of you right now. Some of the changes that we made to the leave donation policy, and I'll just run through some of the bullet comments here, is that, first off, a individual has to have a serious medical condition to be eligible for leave donations. They can't have, just be out a couple of days for the flu or whatever. As of right now, they have to be completely out of sick, vacation, and comp time, and then also the twenty days, consecutive days. The other thing is probationary employees cannot donate sick leave, or cannot donate leave since they cannot use it for themselves for the first six months. That's just clarifying that even though they are getting sick leave accumulated, they can't use it until the first month for sick leave and six months for vacation. So basically, we want them to make it through their six month before they can donate leave to somebody else. Donors must maintain a combined balance of sick and vacation of at least forty hours so that at least the person that's donating the leave will have something less if something happens to them as well. So we set that at forty hours of a combination of sick and vacation, not sick and vacation, but a combination of both. Donors cannot donate over eighty hours of vacation and eight hours of sick leave per year. Right now, we do have a maximum of eight hours of sick leave per year, but our policy as it stands right now doesn't set a limit, so anybody can donate as much vacation as they possibly wanted to. And due to the IRS regulations, they say you should have a limit on how much they should be able to donate per year. And so through the PIC committee and some discussions, we talked about it being eighty hours of vacation and eighty hours, eight hours of sick per year. The biggest change, and I think the one that's gonna benefit us the most, is when somebody does donate sick and vacation to a recipient, that that recipient will get that leave as sick leave, because it's, they're supposed to be out for a serious medical condition. And it also will prevent them from getting a whole bunch of vacation and then coming back and leaving right away. There are stipulations on how much sick leave you have to have in order to get paid out through the healthcare savings plan. And there's stipulations that you have to be here five years and have at least three hundred hours of sick leave to get paid out into an HCSP. And so by taking that donated vacation and sick and putting it into the sick leave bank, that not only allows them to use the sick leave as they needed for their serious illness, but it also eliminates the ability to take it with them when they go, should they leave right away. You must be at least a point five FTE employee, which means that those, it's not until you hit point five FTE that you actually accumulate sick leave. So that's kind of a no-brainer, but we wanted to make sure we put that in there. Donated sick leave will be transferred as sick leave into the recipient's bank. Now, as we were going through this policy, there was one situation that came up that created a lot more discussion on what would happen if somebody was out for a serious medical condition, but they were out intermittently, meaning they were out for three days here, four days here. This case may have been likely for cancer, a cancer treatment. So that they don't meet the twenty consecutive days, but they have been out twenty days per year based on this intermittent leave that they're taking for maybe cancer treatments or whatever. And so we added in the sick leave donation policy that if you are out for, and we categorize this as FMLA, because that's the only way that we're really gonna be able to track this, is you're out, if you're out for intermittent FMLA due to a serious health condition, then we will take those hours and apply it towards your twenty days of being out. So that seems to have opened up the doors a little bit for people who do have serious health incidents but don't have to be out the whole twenty days. Maybe they come back and work a couple of days, and then they're out. So I think that change to the policy is a good one for everybody. The leave that will be, will only be, cover the current payroll that will be deducted, and if a person comes back prior to all of the leave being used and it hasn't been processed yet, then that leave can be returned to the donor as well. And I believe those are the hot topics, the hot points of the changes. I did send this out to the unions for review. Did not get any feedback from them, so. Any questions?
I think it looks good. It's policy that's been being worked on for quite a while, and I think you did a good job with it, and I'd move for approval.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? And this did meet with full approval of our PIC committee.
How about our attorney?
Yes, we discussed it many, many times on the PIC committee. I'm in support of it as well. Thank you.
Brian, any comments?
No, sir.
All right, all in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion carried. Thanks, Darren.
Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is the project updates on the motor vehicle remodel. We'll start with that one. We got a couple of them done.
Yes, we do, Mr. Chair. Thank you. A little too much at times, it seems like, but, you know, first, just wanted to give you a little update in the event that you have not been out there. I know a couple of the commissioners did stop out. I know Commissioner Angersall has been out for at least two construction meetings that have been there. Moving along quite well. We're hopefully looking at maybe the weekend of April twelfth of transitioning over to moving the current motor vehicle renewal side to the remodeled one, and then we'll remodel what's currently in place there. So that's kind of the date that we're looking at. So it's moving along really well. Feel free to stop by again anytime that they're working on there. I think you'll see a layout that is really gonna work for the testing procedure. It's gonna work so much better than it does now. That's really gonna be a help. So, but with that, you have in front of you, when the project was bid, the architects put in a, in the public areas, a kind of a rubberized carpeting, elevated flooring. And some of the feedback that we have gotten back on that from other places that have it say that you'll put that in, and you'll want it out of there within two, three years because it discolors and you can't clean it properly and different things along those lines. So we have been talking with the, with the construction committee on that, or the, I should call it, the campus improvement committee, who's working on that, and we went through what we should have probably insisted on from the beginning, and that is porcelain tile within the public areas. And there was also carpeting in the break room, and the maintenance staff just felt that that would be, oh, that would be more expensive to be cleaning carpeting and cleaning the floors out there than mopping up a linoleum surface. So what you, and the other thing was, it was a fairly elaborate system. It was in the foyer, the atrium entranceway, and that was proposed on the change order. We've been negotiating on that, and so what about before today, and just got these figures last night and this morning on it, or we wanted it by Thursday so it'd be a new packet. But what we're asking for is your approval for a change order of twelve thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars, and that'll change the flooring that's in the entryway. It'll change the flooring in all of the public areas. We'll be going to the porcelain tile and then changing the carpeting in the break room from carpeting to linoleum. So we feel in evaluation of it that this will be cheaper in the long run than having that carpeting that we'll need to change out, so.
Mr. Chair, this has been in front of the committee, and for maintenance purposes, it is the way to go. And the numbers came in a little bit higher than twelve four eighty-six. And in consultation, Brian got it down to this, and I move the change order.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Yeah, I guess I was involved in some of this discussion, too. You know, my concern, too, was the carpet at the beginning, and it makes a person more aware as you walk into a building to look at what's there, you know? And I don't think the porcelain is that much of a safety factor. I mean, yes, it probably is more slippery in some cases, but I don't think it's gonna, you gotta take precaution on it, you know? There will be a ruck there, or not a ruck, or some sort of thing there. So I think it's important move that we do that, you know, because I think the maintenance is gonna be, that struck me right away as a big issue, because we don't have a maintenance employee out there full-time, so we have to accommodate for that, too.
And Mr. Chair, it's kind of an interesting comment with Commissioner Angersall said, you'd be surprised when you're looking at something like this and you're working on a project, how you observe things when you go into Target and Walmart and the mall, and you see that the front entrance and how they're, they maintain it and how it works, and you just start observing things a lot more closely, so.
Swearing.
Yeah.
Well, it certainly seems to me that it's the right way to go, too. This will, in the long run, be cheaper for maintenance and replacement and so on. I would think the tiles will not have to be replaced for many, many years, so that's...
Many years, yeah.
It's good.
Will last longer than me.
Any other comments? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion carried. Brian, you have one more item, the family service elevator refurbishment.
I do, and we're to the point where we need to advertise for bids to move this forward, and we kind of discussed this between Vicki and I. We felt we did not get permission from the board to advertise for bids when we asked you for permission to contract with Michael Burns, associate, to work on replacing the elevators, so we just wanted to make sure we had permission to go ahead and bid those elevators.
I'll make a motion. Cool. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Our next item is the emergency operations plan for railroad emergencies. Brian, are you gonna use the, I'll tell you what, why don't we give you about, let's take a two-minute break, and you can get set up there, and we'll come back. Okay? We're ready to reconvene here. Our next item is the emergency operations plan for railroad emergencies, and we have with us Lieutenant Brian Green, the Clay County Emergency Manager, and Mr. Chad Stangland with the Moorehead Emergency Manager. Welcome to both of you. This is gonna be similar to what we saw at our Clay County Joint Powers meeting.
Yes, yes, yes.
Very good. This is, this is something good to see, and it'll be something good for our citizens to see, so. Brian, are you gonna start this off?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. We'll go back to twenty twelve, when we had that Quebec incident involving railroads and there were forty-some deaths. Back at that point, we decided that we needed to look at our railroad emergency plan for Clay County and Cass County. We got together with Cass County and ourselves, and we developed a plan in twenty twelve for railroad emergency plan. Basically, it's a memorandum to my emergency operation plan. The city of Moorehead also was pretty much adopted it, except for some different variations. But our plan with Clay County and Cass is pretty much the same. So you've seen a lot of things that happened out in Castleton. Basically, if it ever happens over here, it'd be kind of like the same response. Of course, each incident's different, but we try to plan together because all our resources are in Fargo, or they're in Moorehead, or Clay, or Cass County. So we use the same resources, we try to train and respond the same.
Most of what I looked at developing this part, we took it after acting forth from the, Cass County Emergency Manager, Dave Rognis, lessons learned that he found during the incident, and kind of highlighted this as part of this presentation today, so that way we can improve as time goes on.
Okay, I handed out our Clay County Dunham G Railroad Emergency Plan. It's quite a few pages. It's detailed. If you get time, just go through it. If you have any questions, don't be afraid to just give me a call on.
And we started looking at, obviously, this just kind of highlights the issue we have of the train traffic and haz trails coming through, through the county and the city. By far, crude oils are number one commodity, haz trail commodity coming through in twenty thirteen. These are all measured in cars, not gallons, you know, so these are all, each car is right around thirty thousand gallons, and so you can see we got quite a bit of crude coming through town. In comparison to any other haz trails, the next one you see there, it's just bulk haz trails, they're boxed up in box cars. And then you look at most of the other ones that we use and consume, such as ethanol, propane, diesel fuel, and gasoline, and so there's a lot of crude coming through town.
You look at the twenty thirteen crude oil, it's gonna increase, it's gonna be well over two hundred thousand by twenty fourteen. But what's gonna increase, and the ethanol is probably gonna stay about the same.
Say, Brian, maybe if you can try to talk into your microphone a little bit better so that the public can hear.
Yes.
This is kind of an illustration that Minnesota Public Radio did on Oracle that kind of highlights the issues that we have within the Clay County and the city of Moorehead. You look in the gray middle, the train, the big train identifies by far, we have, in twenty thirteen, they looked at the numbers from DOT and Federal Railroad Administration, and we're running right now about a hundred twenty-seven cars a day. We have, what, five to seven of those being oil trains. Some of these, they transport through, they're calling unit trains, about a hundred and ten cars, all the same commodities, so it's all bulk crude coming through one stop. And so in comparison to the other cities, we have a lot of traffic that comes through, not east, west, but north, south also, so that way they can get to their markets. So we have quite a bit of train traffic.
This is just an overall picture of the railroad tracks within Clay County. I think everybody knows where our railroad tracks are.
And these are just the ones that kind of highlight within the city of Moorehead. Some of the issues that we have in ours are the fact that when a train does come from the south or try to go east and west off of the north and south trains, they have to go on the main line on the east, west, and then back up onto that line to get into the rail yard in Dilworth. And so that's why the intersections get blocked a lot more frequently. They're looking at right around four to six hours per day blockage on those intersections coming through the city. And that can tie up not only just to traffic issues of increased vulnerability on traffic incidents, but also then you have that moving of cars, trains, similar to Castleton out there, as they move and pass each other on those tracks. So it is, complicate things within the city.
Again, everybody is pretty much aware that railroads were here before the city of Fargo, Moorehead, basically, that's what it was built, and I foresee no time in the future that they're gonna leave from Moorehead to Fargo. This is a notification warning, this is my... This is a notification warning, this is my, another annex to my emergency operation plan. They just put this up here, you know, again, in Castleton, they used the first warning system as their code red. They did have an auto warning sirens out there, but they did not use them. Again, we can utilize them to notify people that hey, something's going on, you need to find out more information. And if it's the middle of winter, well, hopefully they won't think it's a tornado or something like that, but that's why we use the auto warning sirens. The EAS is the emergency alert system, that's where it comes on the radio and TV, you see the scroll here, it would beep, and also we use the local media. And our public information officer is very important, so they need the information out to that local media and get it out to the public. Just want to touch a little bit on IPaaS, that's the Integrated Public Alert Warning System. We are going to that system, but hopefully by the end of the year, we will have that in effect. Basically, what that does, it combines everything all into one program. So, we can alert people through our code red, we can alert them through our WE, which is a wireless internet alert, or a wireless emergency alert, which is a WE. That basically, it can go off a cell tower and anybody connected to that cell tower can get an emergency message. Also, the social media and all that stuff will be connected to that. It's a FEMA program, dispatch has a part to be, our CAG, which is basically an alerting facility. And we're going through that process now, we have to get certified by FEMA and hopefully when it comes in, it's gonna make it everything more simpler and we can get the word out quicker and more avenues. And this is the overall photos of our warning sirens in rural Clay County. The only one missing is Holly, she could've gone up there.
I hear the ones that are within the city of Moorhead, over the last year and a half, we did some upgrading to our auto warning sirens within the city of Moorhead to make them two-way communications so that way, when we do activate them, we can get a box signal back to that signaling box to identify that they have sounded and it confirms that. The other nice thing about that system is we can activate only particular sirens, so that way if we have an issue on the tracks, we're not activating all sirens within the city, we're activating those in that corridor, so that way those people can be alerted to say, hey, there's something wrong in our area here and we're gonna seek out more information. We do have one siren that's been going in at the airport in 2014 here and then as the city of Moorhead moved to annexation in the airport area, then we're gonna be looking at a couple sites up there. Now, those have not been confirmed yet, but then we wanted to plan for those growth as future projects.
This is our evacuation annex for emergency operations plan for Clay County. Basically outlines responsibility if we have to evacuate, evacuation. Again, the general rule is that a public entity is responsible for evacuating, evacuation is sheltering. In our plan, Clay County Public Health is a big player, basically they're responsible for setting up a shelter and getting it going. Now, they'll set it up and again, that's our responsibility, but within, hopefully within twenty-four hours or sooner, Red Cross will come and they will assist us and basically take it over as a Red Cross shelter. And there's some other stuff in there and that's just, you know, the overall plan, but there's different details in there that we go by. Okay, we have identified all the Clay County shelters and rally points, this is the outside of the city of Moorhead. You can see it on the map, we've identified, they know that we have the contact information that if we have to open them up, this is who we call, they get down there, get it open, we get people in there to help them get it going. In each city, in 2014 was when we did this plan, so it was pretty detailed. We've shared it all with Red Cross, so Red Cross has that information. Some of them are not Red Cross shelters, of course, there's a lot of different stipulations, but we could never meet a lot of their stipulations in the smaller towns, but we do have shelters.
Excuse me, do the people somehow instructed us to which place to go or are they free to go to any?
Well, you know, the thing about, same thing in Castleton, I'm assuming it'll be the same thing over in Clay County and the city of Moorhead, ninety percent of the people do not want to go to shelters, they will go somewhere else. They'll find a relative or they'll find, go to their lake home, stuff like that, I mean, they're just great about it, so you can maybe get ten percent. We'd probably have to get that information out at the time, I'd be probably be in some commanders discretion, you know, we might not be able to use the shelter in a town, we'd have to go to the next city. So, that's a decision that's made by the incident commander at that time.
And these are just the identified shelters within the city of Moorhead, those are shelters and rally points. To kind of, to kind of piggyback off of your last question, you know, obviously you want to open your shelters a little bit farther away and remove, so that way you're, if you're gonna remove people away, you're getting away from that hazard as far as you can. And so, along here, if there's a, an incident, I can, we identified these off for our ward system within the city of Moorhead, we identified rally points in there, so that way people then would migrate to a rally point, we go use our PIO and our media to identify that with the public that hey, there's an issue here, go to these rally points, we'll set up transportation then, and then we transport them over to a shelter removed from that location.
This is, we want to touch a little based on a vulnerable population in Clay County. The Clay County Public Social, Public Health is responsible for getting all this information to us and making sure it's available. Again, that started back in, I think, 2011 actually is when it started. We identify all our long-term care sites and then our corporate foster care, so we have a pretty good partnership with them, so we know exactly what they have and you know how many people that we have there. Then they also set up a website for vulnerable populations, so people can go on to the Clay County website or the city of Moorhead website and sign up and make sure that they're on there. You know, if they don't have transportation or any kind of vulnerability, they can be on there. Public Health also coordinates with social services to make sure that they don't try to miss anybody. So, we have every year that's updated and we track it and we can map it.
And there again, these are just within each of the wards we looked at, you know, in Ward one here, we have twelve, or twelve long-term sites. One thing about the long-term care sites, those can be several hundred people in those sites, so it's just not twelve people at those sites. Corporate foster care, I mean, they could have three to four occupants at that foster site. You have vulnerable population and, you know, and probably dealing with individuals at that point, but it really helps us because not only do they identify that they have people there, but they might have other transportation, you know, equipment that could be used during this incident.
The one thing, if we have an incident, we can map all the areas that we didn't have to evacuate, that'd be the first thing that we'll look at, what kind of vulnerable population do we have in there and we need to get them out. There's always gonna be a special need, Chad said transportation or something like that.
Just in Ward two, we had zero long-term care sites, thirty foster, corporate foster care facilities and forty-four vulnerable population. In our Ward three, we have three long-term care sites, twenty-three corporate foster care, and we have thirty-five vulnerable population. And in Ward four, we had the one long-term care site, forty-four corporate foster care and seventy-three vulnerable population.
I just wanted to put this in there, that we do have a mass fatality planning, emergency operation plan for our military service. It's very detailed and it's thirty-some pages long, I don't want to bore you guys with that, but we do have a plan and our county coroner is Dr. Michael McGee from Ramsey Medical Center out of St. Paul. Yes, I always get them, out of St. Paul. But he is our county coroner and this is his plan. It's pretty detailed, but again, of course, he's a little ways away and it's gonna take a while for him to get here and his team. There's also state resources that we could use and they're called a D-More team. D-More teams can come in maybe within four, six hours to help us get through the fatalities and they bring basically a semi with all the instruments and people that needs to do an autopsy. So, if we do ever get to that position, we do have a plan and just hopefully we won't ever have to get there.
I see, right after the incident, some things that local governments want to kind of move towards to declare that emergency and that allows us to commit additional resources, who the chair of the county board can call for or municipalities, the mayor can call for that emergency declaration. It's good for the first three days, after that, then you need to reconvene that government body and then do a vote to extend it beyond that three days. Reason why you want to do that is it offers some benefits to the governments during the emergency. I see, we're thoroughly familiar with this due to all the flooding issues that we have and the times we've had to go through this process, seems like every year, but it looks like, it does add to create additional buying powers and authorities and procedures, so that way you can go out and contract your vendors as you, as you know, you don't have to go through your normal channels, it allows you then to just go and rent the equipment that you need at that time. You can extend your liability coverage. You probably during a train incident need a lot of volunteers coming in, but this is an example where your liability coverage can extend to those volunteers if you do need to bring in people and those type of things. Mutual aid agreements, you look at what brings in, expands our mutual aid, so that we can bring in additional partners that, we were probably bringing in state agencies and that type of stuff, which would bring in those agencies already, but if we needed to extend our mutual aid. And then obviously, as those, normally in a train incident, the responsible party's gonna be required to pay those expenses, but during emergency declarations, it does kick in to where if we meet our county and state thresholds, those expenses can be reimbursed from the federal government if it becomes a presidential declaration.
Okay, it is touch base, everybody, the only one that can request a national guard is the sheriff. The sheriff would request it through Homeland Security, then Homeland Security would get permission from the governor to release the national guard. Well, it doesn't happen within seconds, but generally we'll notify them before that time and they'll be repositioning their assets and stuff like that. Some of the support agencies that would respond, of course, responsible party, if it's BNSF or it's Otter Tail Railroad, they have to show up, National Transportation Board, EPA, Homeland Security, MPCA, DNR, Minnesota Public Health, Public Social Services, FMAL, Red Cross. I mean, it's just, it's so many people, you can read them off. I just want to touch base on the last few, the Clay County Fire Chiefs Mutual Aid, that mutual aid agreement's been in effect for at least the last ten years. Again, that we have the agreement with all the sheriff, or all the fire departments within Clay County, that if we request their aid, that they'll come and help us. Then we also have mutual aid with Cass County and an interstate mutual aid with North Dakota and Minnesota that just passed approximately six months ago. So, we put a lot of resources up there, but you know, it depends on the situation, we might have to have a lot more, but there's a lot available and we depend on it. Just got some photos of the FMALs, this is their transportation where they can transport up to, I believe, twenty, it's over twenty-some people at one time on stretchers. They have oxygen and, you know, they're everything for the vital, vitals, the vitals of the transport in a mass casualty incident. This is incident command trailer, we use it several times, all the incident commanders, if it's unified command at the time, they can get in there, everybody's making sure that decisions made are made in unison with each other. Oops. And the last one is just that, they call it their beer truck, it's more beer truck, they got stretchers, they got oxygen, they got just numerous stuff that if we ever had a lot of injuries at one time, they would transport that over and it would be able to utilize it.
Biggest thing in these incidents is so many agencies come in so fast, you gotta plan, have to have a plan in place and be prepared to handle those incoming agencies because it could be almost, the response can be overwhelming and along with that, then it's gonna be the responsible party's response. You look at the BNSF resources, obviously, you're looking at crude oil affordability, that's the reason we're kind of highlighting this, is foam suppression, what we use for firefighting techniques to be able to control that fire. Most of fires are gonna be large enough to where it's gonna be hard to handle that immediately, but we gotta bring in additional resources to get in place. In Cass, they brought in three foam trailers, one of the trailers that they do have in the area is one, actually it says Dilworth here, but it sounds like Fargo Fire's been working with them to move that over and house that over on their stations in Fargo. But they have brought in one from Twin Cities, the one Dilworth area, the Fargo area, they brought one in from Minot. So, that way as the fire died down, they could have the enough foam capability there to suppress that fire. Along with that, then they bring in some air quality monitoring. You start looking at evacuating and sheltering people in place, air quality becomes a major concern, is a healthier outside or is it healthier outside and getting people away from this thing or are they better off inside their house? Well, air quality monitoring is gonna be vital. So, they bring in special contractors and they also bring in some computer modeling plume projections that use those monitors that they put on scene and they can project out two hours, four hours, six hours into the event, so that way you know this is gonna move, so that way, you know, government bodies and incident commander can make decisions as to how to best move their people. They're bringing a lot of expertise, you know, they bring in people that do this every day. A lot of contractors and a lot of private contractors. At our Caston, they had over one hundred and forty-two BNSF employees out there. They had what, one hundred and thirty-two contractors from outside agencies or private contractors. So, it just becomes a very large incident, very fast on the response side.
Just want to touch a little bit of base, you know, BNSF, of course, they're all about making money and they know right away that if they have a derailment or anything like that, so they send their resources, they're coming there just as fast as ours. And they take local ones first, maybe they're not experts at what they do, but at least they have some information that can provide to that incident commander when they get out on that scene. Okay, that's it, just, it's kind of an overall, but we thought we provided this information, just sharing with you.
With all of these agencies and cooperative agreements from all over the place coming in, are the two of you coordinating that when they come in or who's in charge?
Well, at first it would be the incident commander would, and basically if it gets to that point where they get overwhelmed, we'd open up our ULC. And then once we get that going, we'd coordinate a lot of that through that emergency operations center. So, we would set that up, and it would probably take four hours, maybe less than, we can actually get it set up within, you know, within an hour. So, then a lot of that stuff coordination will go through the ULC.
Thank you. Mr. Stangland, I believe you said four to six hours per day trains going through Moorhead, is that an average of five possibly or maybe a little more?
That's the number that I've been hearing, so.
And one hundred twenty-seven trains per day. Two or three years from now, what are we talking about? It's not gonna go down.
From what we're hearing, it doesn't, it doesn't look like it's going to turn down, it's going up every year. Look at, probably three or four years ago, we were down around sixty to seventy trains a day and now we're up to one hundred twenty-seven, so, and as production increases out on the western side of North Dakota, we can only anticipate that it's gonna take, they're gonna be transported by rail for quite a while because it's just, it's more marketable from those manufacturer's standpoints. That way you can see on the graph I showed you, they can get them to whatever market they need to get very quickly that way.
Thank you. A few years ago, when we heard Otter Tail, there was talking then, I think, but they told us that the unit trains, I think there's still one hundred and ten cars average, that they were gonna increase them to one hundred and fifty. Have you heard more about that, is that?
For the ethanol?
Well, it was, he was talking about it on Otter Tail, so, but he was talking about unit trains as a whole will be increased from one hundred and ten to one hundred and fifty, because they were gonna need, rather than one intersection, when they're stopped, more than one intersection would be needed to be blocked at a time.
You know, we had this trans care, brought up BNSF up to, we actually had the training out in Fargo, they did not mention anything to that. And that's where these booklets came from, it was open to all first responders, they come up and they put on their, their safety class, basically as awareness for everybody. We also are having one on Holly, they're coming in the evening in April, I believe, if you guys get a chance to come out there, just to show what, you know, they provide to our first responders and training and how to respond. But John, in your question, I have not heard that.
The other question, I talked to Bob Zimmerman about this one, one day, the, one of the safety things they suggested was slowing the trains down. Well, that's not really an answer for us because instead of six hours, it's gonna be nine hours that they're gonna be on the tracks, it's a...
Correct. Yep. And you gotta look at, go back to that Quebec incident, that train was not going very fast. Basically, brakes let go and rolled downhill and collided to the other ones. So, I don't know if speed helps us, but it should. the other ones. So, I don't know if speed helps us, but it should help so.
I think they're, they're working pretty heavily with the regulation on cars themselves right now. I mean, there's a lot of, lot of pressure there to update the cars. And I see, as they come through now, there's a lot of the newer ones out there that add additional safety measures to them compared to the older cars. I think that that's in response to, to these incidences.
Sure. You got to, you got to realize that it's going to be chaotic no matter what. If this happens over, it's going to be a lot of chaotic for, for quite a while. Once we get that, you know, the other perimeter set up where we can try to control it, that's the main thing that we can do. Are we going to be able to get the fire out? Probably not. You know, it's not going to happen. But again, it's, you know, we have to try to control things that we can. And that's the idea behind the training and the planning.
Well, thank you. I, this is my second time getting to see this, and I, I think it's just important for, you know, especially the, the large population of people that are within the city of Moorhead can be, you know, assured somewhat that, you know, that there is a plan, that, that everything that can possibly be done would be done. Like you said, at that, any time that there could be a catastrophic, catastrophic event that would happen at the railroad level, it is going to, it is going to create some serious situations at first until all this mobilization can take place. And that's just the nature of that beast. But I think all the citizens can feel well assured that you guys have done your homework and everything that can be done in the event of one of those events, we would have a good group of people working really hard on it. And I want to thank you guys for your work on that.
Thank you. Again, it's, you know, without support from you guys, we wouldn't be able to do it, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, we'll move into, down to our committee reports, and can we start with you, Brad?
Sure.
Let's see, I did have a, they talked me into being on a transportation committee with MRCC, and we had a call on Friday to discuss some strategy and trying to get more money out of the state for transportation issues this year. And I think overall, the prospects aren't real good for increasing the amount of money. Nobody seems real positive about it, but, but Dan Larson from MRCC has been dealing with the Transportation Alliance and their proposal is to up it to 75 billion statewide and 30 billion for bridges. And, you know, that doesn't seem realistic at this point. So MRCC is supporting that position, but if that falls through, which everybody thinks it will, MRCC is going to lobby for and propose 50 million a year over 10 years with an inflationary factor and then go from there and see what, where it ends up. So it's, but that was one of MRCC's priorities for the year to work on, and so that's, what's being worked on. Now, yesterday, I had a land of the dancing sky up in Monoman and, which is the 21 county group that we belong to dealing with senior issues. And as luck would have it, I'm the chair of that organization next year, so. They are involved in a lot of, a lot of good things for seniors and a lot of things going on. And of course, it's still a struggle to keep things funded, but you're probably all familiar with that senior linkage line that's been in place now for, since 1992, so 20 years. But just an example of that, you know, where people call in, the first year, 52 calls were had in our, you know, 21 county region. Last year, over 15,000. So a lot of, a lot of seniors are taking advantage of the programs that are available and a lot of good things going on there. That was it for me.
Hey, John?
Okay, there's, last week, following our meeting, we had a highway tracking meeting. And following that, we had a solid waste meeting discussing various issues. Both Kevin and Brian were part of both of those, so they maybe have details to, to talk about there. But I will talk a bit about, on Wednesday, I had a couple meetings with the diversion situation. One, we met, is with staff and officials, met with the consulting firm that's been hired to put together the options for mitigation for farmers in the, in the staging area. And it was a very interesting proposal that has come, come forward. There's a number of options that they've presented. They're not going to make the decisions, we'll have to make those, the authority in the end will, will make them. But a number of ways in which they recommend that things need to be done in order to make farmers whole in the, in the damages that they may incur during the, during the staging. It's still said that it probably, you know, the likelihood that it would only occur once every 10 years, that the, that the holding area would be renewed. And the full extent of the holding area, probably only one every 50 years. But it's, it's still necessary so that farmers know that they're protected in case it does. And of course, the farmers feel that it's going to happen more often than that, once the dam is in place. So that's something that we, we presented then, the, that report to the egg committee that evening, and they wrestle with it. And the farmers that are part of that asked a number of questions of special concerns for things like organic farming, where the rules state that the land is inundated, it can't be certified as organic any longer. Just trying to figure out how those things might, might work. The next day I was down in, Thursday, I was down in St. Paul for a day on the hill for a number of organizations, but we, a number of social service programs that I think are very significant. One is the 5% thing, getting increases for personal care attendance, nursing homes and so on, increasing it by 5%. They haven't had a raise in, in their salaries for many, many years. And it's, they're pretty much agreed, I think. The governor is calling for 4% and their legislature is looking at a 5% instead. So I think that's got a chance of, of passing. Issues of housing, trying to increase the bonding for housing, and governors recommended 50 million, and they're looking, try to increase that to 100 million because there's so, such a short, shortage of housing, especially for low income people. Also, the Homeless Youth Act, governor, or last year, the legislature passed $4 million, and they had, people that are working with it had requested 8 million. And they're, they're trying to increase that this year by that extra 4, 4 million, to put it in a position where they could begin making some headway on homeless youth projects. So those were all interesting things. I also then attended the Move Minnesota Rally that was at the rotunda of the Capitol at 4 o'clock on Thursday. And that was really exciting. I mean, the number of people, we, they still say there's not much chance of getting transportation funding, but that was an amazing rally. There was, the rotunda was absolutely packed. A lot of labor union people who were very boisterous in their, in their attempt, but also chamber commerce, farmers, you know, farmer's union was there, just a number of people that have come together to try to increase the amount of money that's going to be used for, for highway construction. And if it's not, if it's not increased soon, we're just never going to be able to catch up on, on the needs for it. So I was very optimistic after that rally that, that somebody had to have heard that because it was just very, very great rally and just united completely on what the, what the needs were. I guess that would be all I've had so.
Thank you, John. Lee?
The only meeting I had was today, Personal Issues Committee. I will defer to our chair and Brian would like to speak on that. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Great. Now, Tuesday evening, they went to a marketing township, they had their annual meeting and their concerns on, of course, roads, well, it's one of them, and how are we going to fund them. The wheelage tax was a big thing that came up there as far as the townships not really getting the participation. I mean, I guess try to explain that, you know, they really do get some of that because they're going to use the county roads and the roads in cities. So in a way, they do get part of the wheelage tax, but there's a concern for the townships, you know, as far as they're paying, they're paying the same $10 fee that everybody else is. Thursday, West Central Negetive at Fergus Falls, which was my first meeting with them. Yes, I was sort of interested in, I just wondered how much they duplicate economic development that we have, you know. I see a lot of the stuff that they do is for economic development also. And I don't know whether we are duplicating efforts or, but this, I mean, they're involved in a lot of grants, giving to counties and stuff, different projects and stuff. Thursday, also the soil and water conservation districts, they're a bit concerned there on feedlot inspections where state statutes say they have to do 7%. And I guess right now, the state coordinator, whoever's doing that, is recommending more feedlot inspections. They're concerned about they have to do too many of them. And then they also give their annual report and their annual budget update. Thursday evening after that, I went to the highway department there, where Dave was going over the five-year plan for county road instructions that's going to go on this year and the next five years on that 10 and 1/2 million bond that we approved. So he had those projects all laid out and was presenting that to the townships. Friday, I visited the family healthcare center, they sort of had a, what they call a speed day, showed all the resources available to the people that were available to the Clay County. Yesterday, I was at the township meeting at Holly. And our county employees gave some good presentation there. Nancy Gunnison gave a good presentation on, good info on assessment of agricultural lands, stuff like that. Dave Overbow again went over the planned road construction stuff, and a couple other people gave good presentations there. It was a good meeting there. That was it.
Hey, John, did you want to touch?
Yeah, I forgot to mention this. This is something that, well, both Frank and I, and I think Brian too, you were at this, the Meeting for Impartial Justice, at the library back, a long time ago. I mean, it was several months ago, maybe, maybe Brian you weren't, but Frank and I were there. There's a movement in, primarily in other states, but to politicize the electing of judges. And for them to be party designated and it to be, to be, you know, they can go out and raise funds for their campaign and all that stuff. Well, Minnesota does not want that. We think that's, that's really a bad way to go. And this, this act, the Impartial Justice Act is, is Minnesota's attempt to stop that permanently, so that will not happen in Minnesota, and to keep it impartial. And it would, it would be set up permanently in the way that we currently do where the governor has a team that reprimands judges, and then they're elected after that. But the votes would be not, the voting would, would come up to be, you would vote if you wanted to, to replace somebody. That's what the vote would be, not, not choosing which one you'd replace, but just that somebody should be replaced. And then there would be, then there would be, they go through the process. If that's the case, they go through the process again of the governor's team appointing and, and so on. So it seems like a fair way, it's a good thing, a good act, I think. And there, I'm not even sure where they're at with this in the legislature right now, but I think it's, we hear about it, we should, should support it because we don't want party designation for, for judges. I just think that'd be a real bad, bad thing, so.
Okay, thank you. Brian, I'm going to go to you, I'm going to go last today.
Sure.
So I'm going to go to you. And maybe, do you want to touch a little bit on the highway tracking and the solid waste meeting we had last week?
Sure, yeah, we can do that, Mr. Chair. Highway tracking, one, one thing that we did spend quite a bit of time on, or we really kind of got into the discussion, was the half cent sales tax that the state legislature allows the counties to, to pass. And we have talked about, you know, how we're going to fund things, and how we're going to improve the roads, and how we're going to build a jail at $30 million. And so we did have an extension, extensive discussion on that. And we had asked in a prior meeting Nathan and Dave to check into some of the, of the interpretations of the law and how that could be used. And, you know, just for discussion purposes, but, but we think there might be opportunities to, to utilize, that means, I know it's, it's assessing another tax, but the sales tax on that, to improve our monies that come in for the roads and also then to, to maybe use the, the general fund dollars for, for funding the, the jail. And, you know, it's, it's a complicated system of what we're dealing with here. We want tax relief for our citizen, but yet we need certain things. And who do we tax, or what do we tax in order to get that? And I know people think it's more fees and more tax without improvements, but, so we're really struggling with that. We're struggling with it in the, in the highway tracking and then on the, on the jail committee that we put together. So we had quite a bit of discussion. I think that took up the main function of the, of the, of the highway tracking meeting that we talked about. But I think that's important that we get that out there, that, that we are discussing it, that people need to know that. We mentioned it to the township officers that, yesterday, that we, we, the commissioners don't have the answers right now, but they're looking at different options. And I think that's an important message to get out there. So, solid waste, yeah, we, we met with our new solid waste manager and, and as you stated, Commissioner Ebert stated it, and Commissioner Campbell is chair of the advisory committee and represents the people on that. So we just wanted to get, get it, to get together to talk about funding and what's the direction of the county for the, the burner and how we transport and how we communicate with Moorhead and their transfer station. They're looking at a new transfer station. So there's a lot of issues there that need to be dealt with. Now, we do have an advisory committee, a very active advisory committee on that, but, you know, the, the final buck stops with the board. So we feel that the board needs to probably set kind of a overall direction, and the advisory committee then can, can kind of advise the county as to the direction that it is going, whether it's right, better people or not. So that's kind of the reason for the meeting was to give us a sense of, of where, does this county board want to go with some of these solid waste issues? There's a lot of them, and important issues too. So moving on to, any questions in regards to those? There were really a couple very important topics that, that need to be hammered out, I think. So I had a staff meeting with, or I attended a staff meeting, I should say, with, with Robbie's team, his maintenance staff, and, and worked through some things. I think things are moving along there fairly well. We had a couple stumbles there along the way recently, but they're doing well there. We did have a meeting, Georgia and I had a meeting with Enterprise, Commissioner Ebert, and they're going to do some follow-up on that. That proposal was for Lakeland, which is a nonprofit, which is quite a bit different than a government regulation, and they recognize that. But they are still going to come back with a proposal to see what they can do for us. So Georgia's going to be in contact with them.
So red county had adopted their, you know, entered into contract with them, so you might want to.
Yeah, several counties have. So, you know, from law enforcement vehicles to, to cars and vans and everything. So we're going to see what they can do for us, see if they can save us some money. Attended the township officers, I, I agree with Commissioner Gross, I think very, very good exchange of information and things during that. We had a pick meeting this morning. Some policies will come to you later on, but we were talking about the fairness and how do we implement a, a, a pay increase for when their promotions occur within the same departments and, and where they're at on the pay scale. And we're working through that to, to hopefully establish a fair policy in regards to that. Just wanted to remind you that the goal-setting session is for April 2nd. I'm really, really hopeful that the commissioners can make that. We're going to have the lean training 101 in the morning for the managers, but you're certainly welcome to attend that. That'll start at 8:00, 8:30, and then we'll go into our goal-setting and review about 11:30 that morning. So I will be out at Holly tonight, have invited, I mentioned that before earlier, on the, on their airport, long-term plan for their airport. And I believe a couple of the commissioners received invitations on that as well. And the Kevin and Craig Halverson talked to me yesterday too a little bit, and Commissioner Gross commented on that, the speed lot issue, the state's putting some pressure on the, the counties, I'll say, to do more inspections of those. And that might, without any additional revenue, of course, so there, that'll be more, more to come on that. But it's out there anyway, so. Mr. Chair, I think that kind of concludes it.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. I had, obviously I had the highway tracking and the solid waste planning committee meetings that Brian talked about, I don't think I have anything to add there. Last Thursday, we had a diversion authority meeting, and there was some of the things that John talked about regarding potential ways to relieve the concerns of the farmers in terms of what type of policies could be put in place. I think that's moving in the right direction, you know, I think there's some people willing to listen and be open to possibilities there. In addition, we got a final report from the basin commission who is doing some work on behalf of the diversion authority that deals with this $24 million that was set aside for the, by the diversion authority for dealing with other ways for retention projects within, within our area, and I think the, the basin commission did a nice job in helping establish the criteria and the method in which, excuse me, most watersheds agencies will be able to apply for those funds. That can be of help to this region when it comes to reducing the foals on the, on the main stem of the red. And this morning, like I said, we had the PIC committee meeting, and I think Brian discussed that quite well. And lastly, I want to talk a little bit about myself. And Saturday I made an announcement that, that I will not be seeking reelection for the board, and having two jobs gets to be a little bit, a little bit stressful at times, and I've been with my current employer for 39 years, as a matter of fact, my anniversary date was yesterday, St. Patrick's Day of that, and I've decided that the remaining time that I have, I want to finish out my career there, and I don't have a lot of years left in, in my working, but I, I do want to see that I leave that place that I worked there for so long in good hands when I leave. In addition, I have really enjoyed my time here. It's been 22 years being in the elected office, and the time spent on this commission with every member that I served with has been an incredible experience. We've all have our own thoughts and our own ideas, but one thing that I've always felt very good about this board, it was never about any one of us, but about what was best for the county. And certainly, when you get on a board like this, disagreements need to happen, they're appropriate because they ultimately, I believe, come to good decision-making. The other reason why I, I've chose these are personal reasons, and obviously, having two jobs, the stress level in my life, I have to admit, has, has been up there, and it's, I just think it's, this gives somebody else an opportunity to come in here and bring in new ideas. So, I certainly hope the people of Oakport or Cragness Township and, and the area of Ward 1 in Morehead will strongly consider putting their hand in the ring for this job, because it's a good job, it's a, it's a fun job, it's a rewarding job, you get your butt chewed once in a while, but that's okay too, and, but I, I, but I encourage both men and women alike to, to get involved in this. I, you know, my wife said to me, she said, are you going to regret this? And I said, well, I probably will, because I, because I do enjoy it, but, but it's time to move on, and I couldn't make a commitment to another four-year term within District 4 where I live, because we're not sure that we would live there that entire four years, and it would be unfair to only fill part of a term and then leave and, and force a special election onto the county, and I just don't want to do that. So, I just want to thank all the people, and thank the board, and we are done.